Of the Titusville Planning and Zoning Commission, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And would everybody stand for the pledge?
I do allegiance to the power of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Aton.
Here.
Vice Chairman Childs.
Here.
Secretary Grant.
Here.
Member Fason.
Here.
Member Gerard. Member Scully.
Member Gallin.
Here.
Alternative Member Finler. Alternative Member Rogers.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. I would move on to the minutes. Any additions or changes to the electronic copy? Anyone care to make a motion? Member Childs.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
You have a second?
I second.
Member Fason, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. City Attorney, would you like to read the quasi judicial procedures?
Yes, sir. Tonight's agenda provides the following notice. All persons who anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must fill out an oath card to be heard on that agenda item and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the entrance to the council chamber or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance to the procedures adopted in Resolution Number 24-1997. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on the item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side, for or against, may cross-examine a witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this point, we have our first petitions and requests from the public present. You don't need to fill out a card if you have anything to speak on. Just step up to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to, I mean, old business. Eddie, First Order Businesses Item 9A. Or staff, I should say. Thank you.
Thank you. So this for easement vacation number 3-2024, starting on page seven of your packet. So on September 10th, 2024, a petition was received from John Daco, property owner, to vacate a portion of a 20-foot public drainage easement located towards the middle of the property at 1558 Meadowlark Drive. All required utility letters have been received, and there were no objections from four of the five utility providers to the request to vacate the 10-foot portion of the easement. The City of Titusville Public Works Department letter stated that there were no objections to vacating the portion of the easement. However, the remaining 10-foot portion of the easement would need to house the relocated swell, and drainage flow must be maintained. During review, staff determined that an evaluation of the drainage system engineering was needed to confirm functionality of the system if the easement were to be vacated. Staff recommended reducing the requested easement vacate from the 10-foot portion to a smaller semicircle-shaped portion to prevent impact to the current drainage flows. In addition to reducing the area to be vacated, staff requested that the applicant provide additional information showing that the drainage will be maintained with the vacation of a semicircle portion of the easement. The applicant requested the initial January 2025 hearing dates be delayed to provide the additional information requested, and the applicant provided a survey with elevations depicting that the flow would be maintained with the vacating of the semicircle portion. The additional information was confirmed by the community development engineer. During the February 19th, 2025 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant requested that the commission not consider the semicircle-shaped easement vacation and instead requested a vacation of the entire 10-foot portion of the 20-foot easement. The vacating of the 10-foot portion of the 20-foot easement is not recommended. The lot has Type B drainage, an engineered drainage swell is located within the easement. Vacating the easement and altering this portion of the property, such as the placing of pavers, will change the fundamentals of the drainage system. Staff are recommending denial of the request to vacate a 10-foot portion of the 20-foot public drainage easement within the rear yard. Vacating the easement and altering this portion of the property, such as placing of the pavers, will change the fundamentals of the drainage system. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our city engineer, who will provide an overview of the recent site visit and share some background on the drainage easement and its intended functions.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. I'm KB of Oso, Community Development Engineer. So, um, they don't have this today. So I'll describe the overall drainage in this area. I'm looking at the approved subdivision plans. I realize you don't have a copy, but I'll try to describe it to the best of my ability. So when you look at this subdivision, this block of the subdivision, the homes along this block, according to the approved subdivision plans, they have a swell in the rear yard. This swell traverses from the most eastern lot through the rears towards the middle of the block where the swell is intended to convey into an inlet. This inlet then connects to a pipe which takes that flow across Meadowlark, Meadowlark Drive, and then into the retention pond to the north. The retention pond then collects other flows from other parts of the subdivision and ultimately pops off into the wetland to the, to the east. The wetland indeed does abut this block of lots. However, the way the system was designed, there's no hydraulic connection. The intent was to give the flow the most circuitous route to get to the final outfall, which is typical in stormwater designs. Also of note is that the yards also have a significant berm with a significant slope that has been designed as part of this system. And the swell abuts right in front of this berm. And that's my overview of the drainage system.
So just to clarify, you're describing the block that this property sits on. Can you describe how the swell and berm are intended to operate in the backyard of the subject property?
Yes, this is what we call a Type B drainage. In other words, the midpoint of the yards is at a higher elevation than the rear corners. So the runoff will split into two. Half will flow towards the street and half will flow towards the rear. And so when it flows to the rear, it will be picked up by the swell and then conveyed to the inlet and the pipe to the, to the west.
I would like to confirm, did all board members receive the questions and answers regarding this specific agenda item?
Yes.
The answers were provided by Mr. Afosu, who is describing the engineering of the subject property. So if you have any questions about that email or any of the answers that were provided in it, now would be a good time to ask Mr. Afosu about those responses.
Is, is that email under Agenda Star by any chance or not?
We can get it there in a minute, if it's not already.
Yes, it's labeled easement responses.
Perfect. Okay. I assume next, do we have any? Member Rogers.
That's Mr. Afosu.
Correct, thank you.
Just in case I mispronounce that. So I'm looking at the, the sort of layout map of the lots on page 14 of our agenda package. Chelsea, perhaps you could share that with him, please. And this has been a bit of an education for me because, as I said in my email, you know, I'm no hydrologist, you know, or civil engineer. So I may ask some stupid questions, but please forgive me. So we're talking about Lot 20. I mistakenly assumed that the water flow in the system was supposed to go 18, 19, 20, 21, 22. But since that's uphill, I assume that that's not actually how it goes. It goes, you said 20, 19, 18, and then I didn't realize this little inlet thing down there. That's some kind of a grate. And it, that takes the water that's flowing down from 22, 21, 20, 19, and sends it under the road to the left?
Yes, that is correct. The, from 23 through 19, the swell slopes to the west, yes, then.
I, I know that you're accustomed to speaking in north, south, east, west. I'm just, I'm unsure about the directions, but it's basically starting at 22 and coming down the page towards 18.
Yes, it's, so it's from, it starts at 23 and then ends on the corner of 18, 19, and 18.
Okay.
Yes.
And this heavily dotted area that we're looking at, that is the berm. And that was placed there to prevent the water from going to the right of the page, but instead to shunt it down to the, to the bottom of the page.
Or is that the swell, I think?
Yeah, well, the berm is, so.
Or is that the swell itself?
No, the, if I may, raise this. So if I may raise my paper copy here. Okay, thank you.
Just right here. Okay.
Yes, so this is Lot 23, 22 through 19, 18. So the berm is, this is the berm right here.
Okay, so that is the berm?
Yes.
And so the swell is not actually on this particular elevation or?
It is, it is. The swell is right at the base of the berm.
Edge of the berm, correct. Okay, so what we're seeing is the berm, but the swell is the base of the berm.
Correct.
Okay. And we did see some photos from Mr. Daco in which it didn't seem like there was any swell there, but that's simply because the swell is just, it's, it's wide, but it's very shallow.
Actually, in this document, they do provide a typical cross-section of the swell.
Yes, I saw that.
Yes.
But, but anyway, when you went out there, that exists at this time, that is?
It's difficult to tell because it appears that there's been insufficient maintenance, and that's my opinion. I don't know for a fact that that's the case. But I did take a walk of the block all the way down through Lot 15. And I can say that, so from 18 through 15, you, you do see a swell. It may look like a depression, but technically, I believe that is the swell that was originally designed.
Okay.
Yes, but then towards 19 through 23, it's, it's difficult to, to see it.
And on page 28 of our packet, I see the little red rectangle that is the, I don't know whether it's the entire swell or whether it's just 10, the contested 10 feet of the swell. But it looks to me like to the right, which is going to be Lot 19, I think. It does look like a fence has kind of been built out into that. As far as you could tell, you said it needs more maintenance possibly. The reason I'm going into this is it, I, I had the impression at one point from something Mr. Daco said that possibly here he is trying to go through all of these, you know, necessary bureaucratic hoops and spending a lot of money and time doing so. Maybe his neighbors have just done what they wanted to do and, you know, and have gotten away with it, and it seems a little unfair to me. I mean, if the swell is really that important, I, I think that we, you know, we ought to make sure that everybody's having to make sure that it stays open and free. But I, I guess I'm just asking, you know, if someone's trying to do the right thing, as I believe is being done in this case, I, I hope that everybody's being held to the same standards. Is it your impression that they are?
Well, I observed the picket fence you're referring to on Lot 21, and it looks to me that it is raised above, the, the soffit, the bottom part, the bottom edge appears to be raised above where I would estimate the swell would be located. So I don't see it as impeding, having the ability to impede the flow of the swell.
You say that you think it would impede the flow?
It would not.
It would not impede the flow, okay. And the sort of wetland area that we see on page 30, page 33, the flood hazard area, which is, again, I'm, I'm just going left and right and up and down, but that's kind of to the lower left, the green area that's to the lower left of this lot. That is a kind of a marsh or a lake of some kind?
I did not go that far back in my field visit, but I'll look on the map and see what it's labeled as.
Freshwater forested slash shrub wetland.
Oh, that's a wetland, okay, so, yeah.
To clarify real quick, member Rogers, just to, just to clarify real quick, that those wetland maps are based on the National Wetlands Inventory Map, so they're not ground-truth surveys of where a wetland is. They're, that's on a portion of a property that's abutting the subject property, but it's not on the subject property.
Okay, so I, I think because of that, I had somehow gotten a mistaken impression that maybe we were trying to have overflow water coming out of this green area and going to the right, which would be flowing uphill, which would mean that this was kind of a useless exercise, except that was wrong. It was actually flowing to the left and then across the street. It's not trying to make its way to this, this lower area. It's, it's going.
Correct. The area, the green area that you're describing is not part of the stormwater system for this subdivision.
Okay, and I just want to make sure that I understand this clearly, although I think this was answered, but I don't have it in front of me. So the, an approval was given by the city for the semicircle and the, and, and it was, and, and because an engineered solution was provided that was approved by the city simply for that small semicircle intrusion.
Well, on page 37 of your agenda packet, you see the February agenda item. The entire agenda packet from February where this item was presented is shown for, for your comparison against the request tonight, which is to vacate the entire rectangle of the 10-foot easement. Whereas the February agenda item had the semicircle where the staff did recommend approval. And here we are tonight, so you have the two to compare, one against the other. And the staff does recommend denial of the entire 10-foot portion due to the engineering that the city's engineer has detailed is missing from the backyard. Again, he's here for your questions on that point. Tabitha, did you want to chime in? Or is that it? I think that's it.
Yeah, that's it for now.
And, but is the, is the engineering conclusion from the city that there is, the city does not recommend in any way vacating 10 feet of this? Or simply that there's not enough information from a certified survey to, to, to say at this time?
We, we did draft that if the board were inclined to improve the vacate request, a recommended condition upon that. And that would be that the vacate would not be recorded until the applicant obtains a permit showing how the swell would be realigned with the remaining 10-foot of easement for the flow to be maintained. So if you were inclined to approval, we would strongly recommend that condition be placed upon the easement vacate.
And do you all have any kind of a ballpark estimate of the cost of such a plan? I mean, obviously, it's necessary, I'm just saying.
No, I, I don't know. I mean, we, we have been in discussions with the applicant. He's aware of this language, and so I don't know if he'd be able to provide you any costs that he's received from his engineer.
I understand. Thank you for your patience.
Anyone else have a question? I had one. In situations like this where the swell was designed at the time the subdivision was developed, but yet it seems like where does the maintenance of that swell over time rest? Is that the easement is there for the city or someone to come in and maintain the swell? Or is it up to the homeowners in the area to each maintain the swell? Because it seems like if one person doesn't maintain it, it can affect adjacent homeowners.
Yes, the, so the way it's set up for this subdivision, this is a, the easement word referring to is a public easement. The plat states that the piping shall be maintained by the city. But it does not address the swell, so we researched that further. And in the covenants, it states that the, it will be maintained by the individual property owners.
An Agenda Star as well, under Bent Oak at Meadowridge, is a copy of that Declaration of Covenants, and I believe it's on page nine, has the maintenance of easement, or page 10. And it does state that that is at the property owner, is to maintain that.
And while it's great that it says it, they do, how's that enforced?
That would be through the HOA.
Okay. And there is, so there is an HOA in place for this subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I also believe that the condition that Tabitha read would describe a process that includes the city's review of the stormwater and elevations through the permitting process. And that's why that condition says that if the board is inclined to grant this vacation request, then the condition would allow the city's review through that permitting process in order to amend the site plan that is currently in place with the swells and berms, et cetera.
So this technically affects not just this lot, but may affect the site plan for this subdivision, or am I mishearing that?
Yes, our goal is to make sure that whatever is granted or otherwise, that the site plan remains in compliance with the original approval.
Got it. Anyone else? Member Fason.
So I'm looking at the picture here. And from the picture of page 28, with the red rectangle, from the picture that I'm seeing here, if this is close to being accurate, it doesn't appear to be near the swell. Or is this swell the one that's going through the lines? Is, so is this swell running perpendicular or parallel to the home? To the rear, to the rear of the home?
Sorry, what was the question?
Where is the swell on this picture here on page 28? Is it running perpendicular to the rear of the home? Or is it running parallel to the rear of the home?
It's parallel to the rectangle.
So it's running parallel to the rectangle?
Yeah, parallel to the, to the.
East to west?
Yes, the long side of the rectangle.
Left to right.
Perfect, great. So as I look at the rectangle here, right, how far from the rectangle is the swell?
So I, I did want to address the, the lines.
Go ahead.
These lines are, are matched from aerial imagery. They're not survey accurate. So these are not to be taken as, as measurements or, or ground-truthed lines. These are approximations at best.
All right, so then let me get to what my question is, right? So there's a 20-foot easement, right? And so, so between that 20-foot easement and to the swell, there should be some distance from the, from the 20-foot easement to the swell, unless that 20-foot easement includes the swell, all right? So if it includes the swell, then how much of that 20-foot easement is the swell and how much of it is not the swell?
The swell is on the cross-section, I believe it's, is it two feet wide? I can take a look real quick.
Again, so while you find that, again, the, the question is, because you're asking the applicant that if we are to vacate the 10-foot, which I don't know if that 10 feet does or does not include the swell, to maintain the swell. So let's say that the 10 feet does not include the swell, then they can just simply maintain it as they have been, and the vacation can happen at the same time. But if that 10-foot that we're looking to vacate also includes the swell, then we need to make sure that the applicant understands that the 10 feet that we are vacating does include the swell as well. Does that make sense?
So the 10 feet, so if we vacate 10 feet, the 10 feet remaining must house the new alignment of the swell.
Well, so I don't want to say no, because we don't know if the 10, if the swell currently resides inside the requested 10 feet. We know that the 20 feet includes the swell, right? But we don't know how much of the 20-foot is actually part of the swell and how much of the 20-foot does not include the swell.
So it looks, so when you look at the, the, the map that you're referring to.
And then on page 14.
Yeah.
Page 14.
So it.
If you rotate it a little bit.
So by eyeballing, it appears that the, the bottom of the swell is right on the, the easement line. So the swell is sort of half in, half out.
Okay. That, that, that's, that's good news, right? So that means that if we do the 10-foot vacation, then it wouldn't necessarily touch the swell. If it doesn't touch the swell, then they don't need engineering to go back and redo it because we vacated just outside of the swell. Does that make sense?
They, so we are, the 10-foot we are proposing to vacate would be on the interior side of, on the interior side of the lot.
Towards the house, right?
Towards the house. So coming in 10 feet, yes, that would impact the swell.
Okay, all right. I, I just want to make sure that, that we, that if we're going to do this, and if you make that a requirement, that it actually needs to be done and that the swell was kind of outside of what they were asking. But if, if, if the swell touches any bit of what we're asking, then, then it makes sense. I just want to make sure that we were clear that the swell actually does touch the, the requested vacation. That's all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Member Rogers?
I, I think that if I've got this right, in, in a perfect world that has been perfectly engineered and, and maintained. Mr. Afosu, please correct me if I'm wrong. The swell should have about a one-foot depth at the deepest point. And from ten feet out to the left side of that, it should be falling to that one point. And for ten feet out to the right side of that, it should be rising from that point.
Yes, that's my... Again, I'm eyeballing. I don't have the exact measurements, but that's what it sort of looks like on the plan.
So in that case, obviously, everything that's not the very center is for overflow. I mean, it's like as more and more rain falls, you have a wider and wider area to fill, so that can carry more and more. But I do take Mr. Member Fason's point here. If the bulk of this drainage is actually right up against the base of the berm, and really mostly what we have here in this ten feet that's been requested is kind of flat ground.
So if you look at page twenty-five, you'll see where the proposed semicircle fits into the easement. And if you compare that with page fourteen, you see where the lines of the swell and the berm are... exist within the easement. And it shows on twenty-five where that improvement would be.
I get it, but the only thing that I don't understand here, and I do understand that the width is important too, because of the magnitude of water that might come, like in a hurricane or something like that. But it's... I guess what we can't see here, or anywhere, is the depth of this swell area. You know, like maybe this is flat where the semicircle is, but it's really dished for the remaining ten feet. Again, I'll have to ask the owners, but... And Mr. Afosu, have you noticed that?
Sure, on the cross-section, it shows that the... Do they have this one?
I don't think the cross-section is in the packet, but I can... It's in the email that was provided with the revision. I don't think it's in the packet, but I can drop it in Agenda Star.
So it's a minimum of twelve inches, which is one foot. And then the size of the swell must be at four to one slope. So... So the twelve inches minimum, and then...
So within that case, a four to one slope means four feet from the foot and four feet, so it's a total of eight foot wide?
No, 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 no. The four to one slope is from the bottom of the swell to the top of the swell. The swell's like this. So this slope is four to one slope. In other words...
That doesn't mean it takes...
In other words, four feet, one foot, if you were to do it that way. Four feet, one foot creates that slope. And then the... So from the top of the swell to the bottom, minimum one foot.
Do you see my confusion? Like, why is it not eight feet wide then, instead of twenty? A four to one slope?
The depth minimum is one foot, so it could be deeper than one foot, which would make it even wider than eight feet.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not necessarily one foot deep. That's just a...
That's the minimum, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's good, because that was one of my questions, is if it needs to get realigned, does it have to get deeper in order to fit? But if it fits within eight feet, then it's just an alignment issue versus depth and alignment issue, so. All right, seeing no other issues, open a public hearing. And applicant? Sorry about all that. Yep.
Hello, my name is John Daco. I live at fifteen fifty-eight Meadowlark Drive, Tennesseau, Florida, three two seven eight oh. Boy, I've been navigating this process, as you guys all are aware, for quite a while. After walking further east, there is a small swell that extends probably ten, maybe twenty feet from that drainage ditch, but it's not very deep. And it probably extends about ten feet off of that fence line.
How deep is it there?
You know what? I've got a picture. I didn't print up any pictures.
Ballpark.
Six inches, maybe, and it could be because...
Not three feet.
No, it's very small. With the... You know, I have a packet I can give you guys, and there might be photos in there of... From the last time that I sent you guys some photos. But I can hand you guys these photos, and I can give the clerk one as well, if you guys would like this kind of packet that I've put together. I took a lot of photos. Unfortunately, I didn't take the photos. I have photos of approximately how wide the ditch is, but I didn't print those up and put them in there. But that's where we're at. Some of those photos, they're not... I don't have them labeled. But in the middle of the packet, they have... There's a photo of the picket fence that's on the west side of my property. And it's probably about halfway through the packet. It's where the white PVC fences start. The white... That white PVC fence, there's some photos in there with my dog in there as well. But that photo of the white PVC fences is the property that is just west of mine, that abuts my property. And you can see that there is a depression there, and I assume that is the swell that they're talking about. And I don't... I may not have given you these photos last time, but you can see that the depression isn't very big. Matter of fact, my dog is standing in one of the photos in the middle of the swell. And then one of the photos towards the end shows the grate. And then again, I took a photo from the grate facing east. My dogs are laying in back there. And that is the swell they're talking about. There's not much to it. I assume that is what the swell they're talking about. The photos that I took that I have on my phone, it measures across. It's probably about two feet wide. Other than that, there is no swell that extends further on. And in the beginning of those photos, I have some date documented ones. I don't know if I have... I don't think I have them in my packet. But there's a photo in there from two thousand and seven that shows the very last house on my property. And if you look closely, it doesn't appear that there's a swell back there. It appears that the property meets just the hill. And again, it's hard to see because it's from the road. But you... I took a close-up picture. That's in there as well. There's no real gradient shades that shows that maybe there is a depression on the photo. I also took some photos that are above my fence that look east, up to my neighbor's property that's to the east. Their hill is well-maintained, and there's no... You can tell there's no swell at the bottom of their hill either. It just runs flat from their back of their house right into the swell. But anyway, those are there for your references. I've been trying to rectify this so that the Planning and Zoning Commission would approve this, and that we would approach you guys with an approval, so that we can move on to the city council. December twelfth or December nineteenth, I had a meeting with KB. We discussed on what we can do to get this permit or this vacated easement approved. He told me that I just needed to get a... An approval from a surveyor, my engineer, that stated that the... My permit application won't interfere with their drainage system, which is so that I did. I went out and got a survey. It was five hundred dollars. There wasn't a letter, but in the email I submitted to him, the engineer stated that the project would not interfere with the drainage system. And then a few weeks prior, before the, I guess, the January meeting that we were supposed to have, I was approached again, saying that the application was going to be denied with what I was asked to do. And they suggested that if I came back with that pie-shaped piece, then the Planning and Zoning Commission would bite off on it and approve it. Subsequently, that's what I did, and I've come here on the nineteenth of February, trying to plead my case on getting the full ten feet, which I didn't know at the time that if you have a small easement that you're looking to vacate, you can't go bigger. From a layman's person from the community that doesn't know what they're doing, I didn't know that that's, you know, what the process was to make this happen. So then it's when we subsequently decided to postpone this and come back, hoping that I could get the full ten feet. Three days ago, KB finally came out to my property. I spoke with Brad, I believe it was Brad Parrish on the phone. He told me KB was going to come out there. He was just going to look at the property. KB and Mark came out to the property. They looked at it. They did their thing. I was under depression. I wanted to talk to them, so I let them do their thing, and they left. Brad called me back later that day and said that maybe we should just suggest postponing this and then getting... Coming to some type of resolution. And I explained to him that I had done everything that KB had asked of me to rectify the situation. I didn't know what else there was to do. So finally, today, I had a meeting with Mr. Parrish at about four thirty, four, four thirty. And then that's when they presented me with this proposal. So I presented that proposal to my engineer, and he said that it is something that we can do. It's going to cost me an extra thousand dollars to make it happen. So here it is. I've put out... Initially, it cost me three hundred dollars because they needed a legal description of my property. So I presented the legal description. KB asked me to make up some other plans. I went to my surveyor. He said, "Okay, no problem. We can do what KB asked." Cost me another five hundred dollars. If we could have... If I could have... If Brad would have told me what he told me today back in December, I could have saved myself eight hundred dollars. So here we are. I'm eighteen hundred dollars deep if we continue on with this plan. It is something that I'm willing to do to make this come to fruition. I'd like to have the ten feet. If I have to jump through the hoops to make everyone happy by presenting a thousand-dollar survey, then that's what I'm going to do. So I really don't have anything else, other than the... That swell you're looking at is about ten feet off of my neighbor's property fence. I don't have any swells in my backyard. When I look at the cross-section of the swell that they have in the building permits, it looks like the swell's the full twenty feet. You know, I don't... Again, from a layperson, you know, it's hard to navigate this without getting the correct questions asked and answered, so. Here I am today. We might have a solution to a problem, and I'm hoping that maybe you guys will approve that, and I can move forward and get this done.
Member Fason?
Welcome back.
Yes, sir.
So question. So were you following our conversations with what we're having here?
Yes.
All right, and so we understand that the minimum width of a swell is eight feet?
That's what it sounds like to me, so.
Minimum depth is one foot?
Yeah, so from what my understanding is, they need to understand where that... If they vacate the ten feet, they need to know where that water's going to go.
Yep, yep.
So my understanding is that they're going to take that ten-foot and then make that their swell.
And the other part is, as you said, that it's also the residents, the homeowners' responsibilities, to maintain that swell?
That is what I... Correct. So that's why I presented the photos to you from 2013, prior to buying the home. There's no swell there either. It's hard to... It's kind of difficult to see. There is some other photos of myself standing down and taking a shot towards the house as it's almost completed. Again, there's no swell there, so I don't know.
Next question, though. So I don't mean to cut you off, but I'm going somewhere with this, so I'm hoping you're following, you know? So how much... So have you ever staked off where that swell should be?
I have, and I think it's one of the photos that are in there. It shows two flags.
Okay.
So in one of the photos, there are two flags. One of the flags... There should be a photo with two flags in there, and I'm not sure which one it is. I may not have it here.
No worries, because here's my second question, right?
Yes, sir.
Where those flags are, does it impede what you're trying to do? Are those flags in your area of what you're trying to do?
Yeah, so the patio pavers, from my understanding, from what the surveyor said, extends six... I thought it was three feet in, but he says it extends six point six feet into the drainage easement.
Okay.
So that... What I... The patio pavers does extend into the easement, yes.
Okay, well, creative thinking can... You know, again, the city's asking that you ensure that it's there, okay? So I think you can make it happen. And save yourself a thousand dollars. I think you got it in you.
Well, I think I can too, but I have to have... They were requesting some type of survey with...
Well, the survey, yeah, but I mean, but I think you can make it happen, if it's approved, if it's approved, if it's approved, so.
Thank you, sir.
Member Rogers?
I do want to say, Mr. and Mrs. Daco, we are trying here.
I know.
Everybody's sympathetic to, you know, your situation. On the other hand, rules have to be followed, and there are some reasons for them. I find that this picture with the white fence, is that your home or the neighbor's?
So that my... The dirt is my house. It's my property. But on the opposite side, that fence is my neighbor's property.
And I find that actually really, of everything that I've seen so far, that is the most instructive, because I finally can see the berm and how big it is, you know, like it really does.
Yeah, so that berm actually extends...
For multiple lots.
Yeah, three houses down to... And it ends at my neighbor's house, so it finally slopes down. And I think that's what it does too. It's kind of... It slopes on both sides.
And so I can, you know, looking at that, I can, you know, even with as little as I know about this, which is basically zero, I can see how, you know, that holds the water, keeps it from going that way, and, you know, shunts it down. I have to say, I believe Mr. Afosu is being charitable by saying that that doesn't look like it would impede water flow. To me, it looks like, wow, that might stop it completely. But anyway, that's not your problem at this point. But the thousand dollars, so you spent eighteen hundred dollars to this point.
Plus the application fee of fifteen hundred, or fourteen seventy-five.
Okay, yeah. But this extra thousand dollars that is possibly to be spent still, that is for another survey?
Yeah, so what they're asking me to do is to have a signed, sealed site plan showing how the conveyance of water will be transferred from the twenty feet to the ten feet.
Okay, and but you have not done that so far?
No, sir.
Because the semicircle was said to be possibly sufficient without the need for that survey?
Correct.
Okay.
And at the end of the day, I would like the full ten feet, right? And I was trying to figure out how to get to that ten feet, that full ten feet. And I thought that KB and I had an agreement in his office initially that said, hey, you have your surveyor engineer sign off on this, that it will not... That your project will not impede their water flow. And subsequently, that's what I did, which shows all the site elevations.
Right.
And I thought that was sufficient enough, but it wasn't. That's when they kicked it back and said, hey, here's the semicircle. We'll take that.
Well, I... I don't know. Again, I just want to say I appreciate you having tried to do this correctly. And I'm sorry that it's been so difficult and expensive. I do think there's an answer here, you know, as you probably have learned, we don't really have a whole lot of power. We don't say yes or no on anything. We just say, we recommend yes, we recommend no, and then, you know. But anyway, I do commend you and your wife for, you know, the work you've put in here.
Yeah, it's... As a layperson, navigating these applications, it's pretty difficult. So I... There's no textbook or manual that says how to do this. I'm at the mercy of the department, so. Like I said, or like the young lady said here, Tabitha, there was a recommendation, and that came from Mr. Parrish this afternoon. And I think that if we can... I think that I can pull that off, but I'm going to need to have you your approval on it.
And what was... Remind me exactly what he said?
It was basically they're looking for a site plan that's signed and sealed.
This is a thousand dollars?
Yeah, a site plan signed and sealed that will, you know, show the water being, you know, transferred from that, the ten feet to the back ten feet.
Okay.
Member Childs?
So you lived, you lived in this house since 2013?
I have, yes, sir.
Okay. So you've seen rain and stuff happen and have you watched where, where the water drains? Have, do you know what kind of drainage there is right now, what it looks like?
My, so the water that, there is some water that collects, but it just naturally drains into the, to the earth. It doesn't flow in either one direction.
It kind of collects by the burn or?
Um, no, it just collects in different areas of my yard, but then it just, you know, it, it absorbs into the sand shore. We did, and I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, but we had a pretty significant storm and it may have been a hurricane where the, the first time ever, the drainage pond filled up. So whatever this drainage system does, it works. It, it took all the water and it put it to where it needed to go. And I think subsequently after that, the, the wetlands that were there actually became a pond. So some of the, the summer pond aspect of it became an actual pond and it's still there today. So. But that drain system works. It does.
So I question for staff and, and I guess question slash caution for the applicant. So if this, in, so my understanding is the, we need an engineered plan that takes a ten foot wide swell that's on the subdivision plan that affects the drainage across multiple lots. And across this lot, we want to narrow that to the eight feet, but make sure that the eight feet-ish is in, still in the easement that's maintained and we vacate the part where the eight feet isn't. So it's going to require a swell that's in the eight or within the ten foot of the remaining easement. Is, am I on track so far?
Yes, but the board would not detail all of that in your motion. That would be captured within the staff review of the permit, which is why the staff recommends, if the board is inclined to approve this request, that a condition that the vacate will not be recorded until the applicant obtains a permit showing how the swell will be realigned within the remaining ten foot easement for the flow to be maintained. And I would also put a timeline of within one year in your condition so that the vacate doesn't stand open and unrecorded indefinitely.
Right. So, and you say that it's worth that thousand dollars that you've checked in?
I mean, I'm, I'm this deep into it.
Got it. So.
I'd like to have the property.
Is there a chance that in addition to the plan, there is an effort to create a swell that doesn't really exist, that matches the one foot deep and that you could argue would have been part of maintenance anyway. But just so we all understand, the total cost of this is there a chance there's actually some site work that needs to be done in, once the permit is issued to meet the final inspection of the permit? Yeah. Implementing the plan. Yep. Cause I, I don't want him to get another surprise that, oh, I gotta go hire a land contractor to.
Chairman, to clarify, is your question that as part of the permit to improve what the applicant's requesting within the current easement, that there would need to be some restoration of what the site plan shows as far as a swell and a berm to back to what the plan states? If that's.
Hey, well, yeah. So a, a permit is, is a permission to go forward and then you get a final inspection that the permit was actually executed. So I'm assuming when you say the permits to improve that area, cause we're primarily been talking about just taking away some vacation, but it sounds like it may not be that simple in addition to getting the plan. That seems like there, to me, there might be a chance that there's actually some improvement necessary of the remaining swell, which because of the documents and the HOA, it's your responsibility. It's also your neighbor's responsibility, but you know, at, at some point, we're responsible that we're not doing anything that water starts backing up on any property based off of something that we did. And, and that's why staff's requesting the engineering. So I just want you to be aware, seems to me there might be a chance that there's actually some dirt work that may have to be done, which you could argue might have to be done anyway, independent of this vacation because it is the responsibility of the homeowner slash HOA to maintain that swell. I just throwing it out there.
So that's when now I come back, right? So that's a great synopsis. So there is a, what appears to be a twenty foot swell on my property. Cause if you look at the easement in the, the cross section that he gave me, there's a bunch of slashes that shows this twenty foot swell that extends along the, the easement. So my thought was, why not just push the hill back ten feet? And it'll be in alignment with the rest of the hill. The, the rest of the hill runs, it, it, basically that hill almost stopped. It might, it might go two feet over my ten foot section. So I, I have it flagged off in your flag section where it's a twenty foot section. And then there's a metal, there's a wooden pole that's in there. If you look further west, that hill kind of backs up as it moved, meanders west towards that hill. And so my thought was if I don't, if I push the hill back to the ten foot, which would be the new easement, all of that would, would still.
So I guess.
Me, it would still flow to the west.
So that kind of raises a procedural question for city engineer staff.
But they want to see a swell. So I, I don't know.
Is the engineer going to establish where the swell should be and then we build the easement around it? Or are they building where the swell needs to be inside the easement that currently exists? Cause it sounds like the applicant would prefer the, the swell to be in the ideal location, which may or may not fall within where the easement is currently surveyed, if I'm hearing it correct.
So we can't change the easement without going through an entire replat, is my, would be my opinion. So the easement is firm.
Okay.
And the swell has to fit within the easement.
So it can be anywhere in the easement is what, what I'm hearing.
Well, I, it seems like because you want to free up the area closest to your home, you want it to be in the back ten feet of the, of it, which is going to be closest to the berm. But your thought of sliding easement back far, or you know, basically going back farther against the berm, it sounds like it's wherever the easement's platted, that's where it's got to be.
Right. So it has to fall within, anywhere within that twenty feet, is what I'm understanding.
I think where you're going is you want it to fall within the ten.
Correct. Yeah. Yes, sir. I'm sorry. As it stands now, it falls anywhere. So now it will need to fall anywhere within that ten feet. And, and I, that is what my engineer would make happen. And I requested the, the site plans, the original neighborhood site plan so that he can make it fit so that it matches up with the, the swell that's there now.
Okay. So I think that answers all of my questions. Member Rogers?
Just one more from Mr. Afosu, I think. At some point, Mr. Afosu, you said that it was, the swell was engineered to give the flow the most circuitous route. Can you explain that? Why, why that's done or what that means?
That is for the overall storm system.
Oh, that's not just for this particular swell.
No, no, not for this.
Never mind. Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't matter then. Okay.
All right. You have any other questions for us? I think we're good. We'll see if, is there any cards?
No, sir.
Okay. So. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So to close the public hearing, it seems like we've got an option on the table to make a motion with some conditions. I'm not gonna, I don't know who wants to attempt, but I think we should get some directions from staff of, of what those, how that motion and condition should read if, if someone cares.
I'd like to make a motion to just do what Chelsea said.
For the record, it would be the city's recommendation to include a condition that the vacation will not be recorded until the applicant obtains a permit showing how the swell will be realigned within the remaining ten feet of the easement for the flow to be maintained and that should be done within one year.
And given that, we recommend approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Second. Any discussion? All right. Roll call vote, please.
Member Fason?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Childs?
Yes.
Secretary Grant?
Yes.
Member Gallin?
Yes.
Member Rogers?
Yes.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Chairman Etan?
Yes. Sorry, it's as complicated as it is, but we do what we can.
We're not experts either, Mr. Daco.
All right. Item nine B.
Thank you, sir. Item nine B, page fifty-six of one oh eight. This is Verona Village C final plat. Verona Village C is a proposed five hundred and thirty-six lot, single family subdivision on approximately one hundred and eighty-four point eight-six acres, located west of Verona Village D subdivision and south of Verona Village B subdivision. The overall Verona development, formerly known as Willow Creek, consists of six hundred and seventy-five plus or minus acres. In 2016, the remaining portion of the development excluding phase one was rezoned to the PUDZ by ordinance nine twenty seventeen to allow for an additional one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven residential units and one hundred and seventy-two acres of commercial and light industrial use. The PUDZ was amended by rezoning from the PUDZ to the planned development zoning with conditions in 2024 by ordinance six twenty twenty-four. The following are attached and required, and are required for approval. The final plat, covenants, performance bond, sidewalk performance bond. The final plat is consistent with the comprehensive plan, the preliminary plat and final plat requirements described in chapter thirty-four. Staff reviewed the final plat for consistency with the comprehensive plan, land development regulations, and recommends approval. Staff also reviewed the covenants and performance bonds and recommends acceptance. And then just as a background refresher for the commission, this is a plat. Plating is the, the city's process for subdividing land, which is outlined by state law. The steps, there's three steps. The sketch plat, which is the initial concept, and that comes before P and Z and council for approval. If approved, it moves to the next phase, the preliminary plat, which is the preliminary plat and site plan, the permit for construction. And then the final step is this, the final plat, which is accept, the city accepting the roadways and any utilities, infrastructure for ownership and maintenance. So this Verona Village C final plat was approved by P and Z on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three and by city council on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as the sketch plat. And so since then, they've gotten their preliminary plat and started construction. And this is the final plat to accept those roads and infrastructure. City council will consider this item on April eighth, twenty twenty-five. And staff recommends approval of the final plat, covenants and bonds for Verona Village C. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Rogers?
Eddie, was this the one where originally there was a, there was going to be a commercial component? And then at some point they pulled that and then maybe they changed it over to like a walking trail around a, a, a water feature? Am I, is, am I remembering that correctly?
Not this specific village, but that is a, a component of the overall Willow Creek, Verona master plan. It's in, that was the north.
Is that like a B section or something?
I'm not sure which letter, but it is in the northwest corner that.
Are there just three, A, B, C?
Uh, no, there's, I think five total.
Goes through E, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
All right. No other questions? Open the public hearing. Is there applicant present?
Good evening, everyone. Steve White, KB Home Orlando, nine one zero two South Park Center Loop. Thank you for having me. Happy to answer any questions you have involving this plat.
Anyone? Member Rogers?
I'm kind of a tree guy. And I just, I remember it wasn't this, I don't think it was this section. It was a different section. But I find myself disheartened frequently as a member of this commission by when we get a chart that shows trees in a development area. And sometimes they're shown, and I believe that one of the sections of this Verona section was shown this way. You have dots that represent the trees and the dots are either green or maybe black if the tree stays and they're red if the tree goes. And I just remember it was nothing but red. And I remember asking somebody about that and the explanation was that the land was so low that so much fill had to be brought in that any tree that was already there was going to die. Is there anything that can be done about that? Is there anything that your company or other companies in your industry try to do to mitigate that?
A lot of the landscape mitigation or tree saves or tree removal were done and approved previously in the construction plans. That's well.
I know they're approved. I mean, I'm not saying that anything was done that wasn't, wasn't approved or wasn't legal. I just, I guess I'm just asking from a, an aesthetic and a, and a natural standpoint. I mean, what we see a lot of is that, you know, live oaks and pines and palms and native species go. And then they're replaced with, you know, I don't know, crepe myrtle or something like that. And it's, I guess what you're saying is that's going to continue. That's just part of the process, that the trees have to go.
Well, anything that is protected, we're talked about, whether it's the size of diameter and the DBH of a tree, diameter at breast height, that's all discussed in the construction plans to include what is the protected wetlands that we can't do anything to. That's all discussed long before the plat and before construction starts.
And these lots are fifty by a hundred?
Uh, it's a combination.
Okay.
Of forty and fifty by.
Some were forty.
Twenty.
So some were forty by, by a hundred?
One twenty.
By one twenty. So they're forty or fifty by one twenty.
Cause some could be wider than that, depending on the corner lots of the house and stuff.
So if there's, if it's on a corner, it might be a little wider. And what is the price going to be for the homes, do you think roughly? I mean, I know that changes over, you know.
I don't have the answer to that in the plating. I'm not in sales. I just do the plating and land development.
But it's, 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 nothing would be considered affordable, right? It's going to be in the four hundred, four hundred thousand dollar range probably.
What the, the price point they said, I, I don't know that. I don't review that for this process.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
I don't see any other lights. Thank you.
Thank you.
I assume there's no cards?
No, sir.
All right. Close the public hearing and any questions or comments? Anyone care to make a motion?
I've got a question.
Member Rogers?
Can someone who knows more than I do, which is most people on this board, explain to me how this doesn't fit our definition of urban sprawl?
I, I think you'd have to go back to the comp plan review.
Eddie? Tabitha?
Well, I know previously there was a non-residential component and the idea was that this would have homes next to workplaces. But I believe the latest master plan amendment removed the non-residential component.
So somewhat the reason it was approved in the first place went away. Is that what you're saying?
No, not saying that. Just that there was a non-residential component at one point. When you're considering urban sprawl, you want to look at other development nearby. There is a commercial strip along Grissom that isn't developed yet, that there are future land uses for commercial uses. And so it could be that, that will provide the mix of uses further south when that gets developed.
But how many units are in this entire development? Do you, roughly?
One thousand two hundred and seventy-seven residential units.
So now that there are twelve hundred residential units in this place where. So now that there are twelve hundred residential units in this place where there were no residential units before, very few. I suppose that the next time somebody wants to put a development next to this, they will say, well, there are twelve hundred units here. It's a residential area, right? I mean, that would be the reasoning, right?
For, for commercial development?
No, residential. With, you said this wasn't residential development before. There was going to be some commer, there was some commercial, so the residential would go with the commercial. But then the commercial that, I guess what I'm saying is this is an established residential area, a very large one, that was where there was no such thing before. So in the future now, basically other residential areas will be added to that, probably, because it's, the precedent exists.
Uh, that's possible.
Yeah, probable, I would say.
Just, this is a point of note. This is a mile and a half probably from my office. They're getting ready to build a three hundred and fifty employee Lockheed Martin right next to my property. Um, so they're in, you know, convenient for employees. I don't know that any of my employees have moved in there yet, but the fact that they can be close to work is of interest to them, so. All right. Uh, Member Childs?
I make a motion that we recommend approval of the final plat covenants and bonds for Verona Village C subdivision.
Second.
Member Grant, second. Any comments? Roll call, please.
Secretary Grant?
Yes.
Member Rogers?
No.
Member Fason?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Childs?
Yes.
Member Scully?
Yes.
Member Gallon?
Yes.
Chairman Etan?
Yes. All right. Motion passes.
Member Rogers, could you share your intent for recommending denial, or not voting for the motion?
I just think that the entire development shouldn't have happened in the first place. I think we've lost all the trees, the lots are very small, there's no affordable housing component. What it was based on, building around commercial development went away. And um, I, I think it's urban sprawl, and I think it has established a, a toehold for more urban sprawl. I mean, I know that doesn't change anything, but I just, I feel like I should say so.
Okay. Moving on to um, I'm assuming there are no petitions and requests from public present? City staff report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We added uh to your report section of the agenda tonight, item uh eleven A one. It's the comprehensive plan, future land use element policy recommendation for one point nine point one. This policy, if you remember, the commission voted to forward a recommendation to city council to broaden or um review what would, what, what classifications of roadways um related to policy one point nine point one uh could be expanded. And so since then, um on March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, the city council approved a motion to not consider the P and Z's recommendation at this time. Council included in their motion that if the planning and zoning commission had specific language that the commission would like to provide to the city council, then staff can bring that language back for council's consideration. And so we brought it back to you tonight as a report, not necessarily an agenda item, because um the commission could consider that uh you'd like to uh not fur, not consider this item further. I, I guess we need to hear from you all if you think that this is something worthwhile to move forward with, and if so, we'll create it as an agenda item on a future agenda where we can get into more of the language drafting mode. We can, staff can present some draft language, and then uh P and Z can provide us some input on. So just wanted to get some guidance from you all as far as um now that you've gotten a decision from city council not to move forward at this time and potentially provide some more uh specific language, we need to know your intent.
Member Childs?
I think, I think there was a lot of people who got the wrong intent from what we were intending to move forward with, which was I think some of the people on city council understood it, it's, and, but there was a lot of opposition um that was vocalized at city council. But we were really wanting to get more of a definition around what that policy meant. So we could, so it would be clear for everybo, everyone, developers and citizens and everybody. So it, because it seems like every time that we have something come before us and it involves that policy that there's confusion, or they're saying, well, look, there's this gray yard, does it, does it really match that or not? And there's lots of opinions that go around. So we really just wanted it to be more of a solid definition. Not that we wanted it to not go before city council, just, you know, we could still, you know, maybe edit that comprehensive plan um uh policy. But to be more definitive of what, you know, just have more criteria in there of what, what it really means to be, you know, a certain type of road. So we didn't have any confusion over that. Not that we wanted it to not go to city council or whatever, so then they, that citizens could um voice their opposition to a certain project. So I think um it kind of got misconstrued. So I, I don't know if we need to move forward with it or not, because there's so much. But I think it's important because we see this all the time, and then it goes to city council, and there's always an argument about what it really means, so.
Member Rogers?
I certainly would think that Member Garad would need to be in on this conversation, because he knows a lot more about this than any of us, and is happy to tell you. But uh, I, I do think that it's worth noting, I, I think every single comment I saw people said no. You know, I don't think there was one single comment in support. I, I, I take your point, Chris, that um, and I take Member Garad's point that roads do change over time. And, you know, what used to be a wagon track, you know, now is a four-lane highway, so, you know, uh, you know, times change. My point was the process of determining that, because so much depends on it, and the scale, and the height, and the size, and the traffic, and the numbers, you know, are so dependent on the road category, that I think that sort of thing has to be free from political and financial, you know, manipulation and influence. So I think it, I, I like the fact that it's reviewed every seven years under the, what is that thing called?
The evaluation and appraisal report, year.
Yes, thank you. Um, you know, but I do think that clarifying that process and, and seeing how it's done, maybe making some input and some recommendations on whether that process could be improved is legitimate, but I almost wonder whether it wouldn't be the sort of thing that we should do. Like in a sort of a private, not private, but a session, you know, like a, I don't know, workshop, yeah, thanks. So I guess that would be, if, if we're going to do that, maybe we ought to all get together, you know, with Mr. Garad included, and, and have a workshop about, about it, just so we can understand what we're really talking about. Because I, I think the, I think the council's right, it was vague.
So just to clarify for all the members, to make sure we understand procedurally what we're talking about. There's a specific policy in the city's comprehensive plan that some of the members, it was voted on, so all of the members, or I guess I shouldn't say all the members, the commission. The commission voted to suggest the city council to change that policy in some way, shape, or form. The process for doing that is the P and Z would have to make a recommendation towards that, um, and also the specific language of that. And both of those would go to city council. City council would approve it, and then the state has to review the comprehensive plan change and agree. And then it gets back to, sent back to city council, once it, the state has no issues with it, and then city council formally adopts it. So it is a somewhat lengthy process. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And so um if there's consensus to move forward with bringing this forward at a future agenda, staff can start working on some draft language and see what options uh the commission does and doesn't like, and we can kind of move forward uh in that direction.
So I, I take a little different view of it in that I think this arose or continues to arise out of the interpretation of comprehensive plan that as, as kind of a concrete statement in that certain uh developments we run up against that need to be, meet a certain criteria as it relates to the roads. And we've made exceptions to that, those criteria based on staff approval and, you know, at, at the approval of the commission. But because of the way it's drafted, and because the way the public interprets it as well, it's, it puts kind of rock in a hard place. So it seems like, you know, the option is either explain better or create language that allows for exemptions and what makes up the criteria that we exempt those. Or I think the direction that we were originally going was, while us maybe still adhere better to the, to the comp plan verbiage, but maybe some of the roads need to be relooked at that to, to, in order to properly meet that criteria. So I don't know if there's an opportunity as something gets presented to us that staff recommends that does vary from the policy because of the situation with the classification of the roads, that maybe there's a way that staff could recommend or explain in the, in the recommendation why the variance is taking place. I don't know that that still necessarily takes the public piece of it, but maybe it allows us to better understand why we're doing what we're doing. But that's at least just my view of, of kind of what spawns this, and, and what we continue to wrestle with is when we're told and it's shown that, you know, it's, it's a local street and an arterial instead of an arterial and collector or whatever the classifications that the comp plan says should be there, it's not there, but yet we still get a recommendation to move forward with it. And, and a lot of cases, it makes sense to move forward with it. But it's still an exception, and it doesn't seem that we're necessarily given a lot of clear guidelines as to what we can accept and what we can't. We just kind of do it, and I think that's the part that's creating heartburn amongst ourselves. That's my view. It's that, I, I still don't know that you got what you asked for or what you need. Commission?
I don't, yeah, I think, I don't know that we should move forward with it though, um, because I think, I mean, maybe, I don't, I don't know. I mean, may if we think about, uh, think about it ourselves, and maybe we come up with some sort of um language or idea, solid ideas that we could present to them. But until, you know, us as individual commissioners come up, you know, if we, if we can come up with something, probably Garad could. But um, and he can present it to the staff of what uh kind of encapsulate what we're, what we're thinking. I think we should just leave it until we have something to give them, the staff.
So do we want this to show up on an agenda again in a month? Member Rogers?
Well, I was just saying, um, you know, until, I, I, I don't know, it's, it's mostly black magic, what you do with the year report. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I have no idea. But um, you know, maybe if we were to have some kind of a, of a little presentation uh from staff on, you know, how decisions are made, and okay, this road is this because of this, and that road is, is not this because of that other thing. And, you know, maybe it would give us some ideas of, of things to, I mean, I just, I, I feel like I'm kind of, you know, throwing darts in the dark here. I don't know what exactly I would say, other than I'm nervous about being able to shift on the fly.
For the members that are unfamiliar with the year process, since it is amending the comp plan, it does come before planning and zoning commission for a recommendation at city council for approval. So you will get a presentation on the year uh recommended changes and how we got there.
But I'm just saying, like, I don't, I don't know that we would have any, how would we have any, any changes to recommend if we didn't understand exactly, at least somewhat, how it worked? I mean, like, maybe, maybe we don't do anything at first. We just hear an explanation of how this process works, and maybe staff's opinion on where the process sometimes fails and why. And then we say, aha, if we did this, it would be different. And I'm, I'm thinking out loud.
So. I think the direction sounds like, and certainly open the comments from the commission members, is, you know, we let it marinate a little bit and don't, don't act on it, but um, and, and, and wait on Member Garad to, to be here. But I, I guess, I guess my feedback, when do we review comp plan changes for the year? About?
Uh, when will we bring the year to, to this commission?
Yes.
Uh, I don't have a timeframe for you just yet, but uh it would be before the end of this year.
Yeah, so maybe sixty days before we're going to see it again, maybe put it on our agenda to bring up as a discussion point so we can, you know, at least talk about it again and, and see where we've changed. And we'll also have a better idea of, you know, how many projects have come before us where this is an issue. But certainly was, a few of the projects that came for us last year, it seemed like it's an issue.
Sure, will do.
Another year passes and there's none, it might not be the issue we thought it was, but. All right. Um, city attorney?
I have no report.
Uh, I have no report, other than to thank Vice Chairman Childs for carrying the torch in our last meeting in my absence. Uh, any members? Seeing none, I think we can adjourn.